Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the planning committee, taking place from the Walton Suites on Winchester Guildhall on Tuesday, 14th of December 2021. The time is 9:30. My name is councillor Jay Rutter. I'm the vice-chair of planning and I will be chair in this meeting. And I'm sure we'd all like to send our very best wishes for a swift recovery to councillor Theresa Edwards, the chair of planning, who is currently indisposed. I need to remind you that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. I'd like to remind any officers joining virtually to please turn off their cameras and mute their microphones until invited to speak. Can I also remind members to speak clearly and remember to use your microphones? Please note, we are operating in a COVID-secure environment and have adopted measures including social distancing, use of masks and the sanitisation of desks in between items. Numbers in the meeting room are carefully controlled and the meeting venue arrangements have been risk assessed to include any updates to reflect the most recent government advice. Furthermore, a CO2 air monitor has been installed in this room, which provides an indicator of potential increased airborne viral transmission by monitoring CO2 activity levels inside. This is used as a guide and tool alongside the other mitigations that have been implemented. We will be pausing the proceedings for up to five minutes between every application to allow time for sanitising chairs and microphones. Please see the handout you were provided with for further information and guidance about this meeting. Finally, can I please ask everyone to ensure that mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silence or preferably switched on entirely? Okay, I'd like to introduce the members and officers present. The members of the committee on R and I the side, elected members. To my left, we have Julie Pinnock, who is the head of planning. We have our legal officer, who is Gennett Sutherland. We have Claire over there, who's taking the minutes and operating all the electronic gizmos. My vice-chair councillor Leamie, we will appoint in a moment. And the officer presenting is to our left there. So we'll go straight to the agenda. And a new item number 1A. I don't think we've put it on the agenda otherwise, have we? Is to appoint the vice-chair of this meeting. So I'd like to nominate councillor Leamie. Are there any other nominations? Councillor Edwards, if you'd like to second that nomination. Thank you very much. Thank you very much councillor Leamie. Okay, we now move to... Oh, sorry. Vote. Oh, yes, all those in favour? Well, there were no other nominations. Any against? No. Well, thank you to the council. That nomination was approved. Thank you. Apologies and deputy members, please.
Thank you, Chair. An apology is received from the chair councillor Evans. And I count councillor Brock becatizing. Thank you.
Members, do we have any disclosures of interest? Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chair. For the avoidance of doubt, I wish to declare a non-prejudicial and non-protegetic interest with regard to item 12. As a governor of Peterson's College until October this year, I was involved in the college's planning. However, I had no involvement in the development of the proposal for us today and I have no current relationship with the college.
Thank you. Perhaps you could repeat that at the beginning of item 12 as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we are now on item four. No, we're on item three, the minutes of the last meeting. And that's been sent separately from the main agenda. Can I take it that those minutes are agreed?
Right.
Thank you. Item four. We have an update sheet with names of speakers and so on. Can I take it that that is also accepted onto the agenda?
Great.
Thank you. We now move on to the planning applications. The first item is number six, Stakesfield Stakes Lane, Upton. And the officer presenting is Hannah Harris. Hannah, thank you very much. If you'd like to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Today I present to you application at Stakesfield Stakes Lane, Upton. The application is for a change of use of agricultural land as the exercising of dogs and the installation of primitive. Here we have the location plan. Application site just up here. I'm now going through my site photos. On each slide, you have a small map on the right-hand side. The white star indicates the location of the camera and the black star indicates the location of the application. These are the views starting at the entrance of the application sites. Same view but facing back out to the main road. Photo showing the approximate location of the post parking area. Entrance is just here. Photo showing buildings and residential property within the post vicinity. We have one and two stable cottages to the left and we have farm buildings across the main road. Now go through the plans. This is the existing site plan. This is the post-site plan. Existing entrance being used for the proposal, post-car park area and perimeter boundary placed. Post-parking area. With the post-shelter, anybody wishing to walk their dogs in. And finally, the post-spencer, being used for its boundary.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Okay, we now move to public participation. We have one objecter. That is Simon Barter. Simon, are you here? Yes, lovely. Thank you. So when you're ready, you will have three minutes. And you switch on the microphone by pressing the button at the bottom and the red lights will come on. There will be a timer showing you how much time you've got left. If councillor Pearson could move his flask, I'd be able to see this as well. If you could just move your flask, Catherine. Move your flask, then I can see the clock as well. So if you're happy and ready to go ahead, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I had some really principled objections. The first being demand for the site was not being fully justified. Secondly, the location, I don't believe, is optimal to meet the needs that they expressed. And thirdly, I don't believe the environmental plan is practical. So if I start with the first of those, demand for the site not being justified. The applicant says there's a complete lack of facilities within Bishop's Waltham and surrounding areas. Now, a quick look at the internet. I found three sites within three miles. The Dirty Canine Corral, Muts Meadow in Winter's Hill. Both of those are probably within a mile or so. And the lower Upton Field rental site, which has previously been noticed. So I don't really believe that the demand is being fully justified given the three sites within three miles, not the nothing within 10 to 15. The location, I don't really believe, is optimal either. Again, the applicant states that Bishop's Waltham requires green spaces, parks and recreational ground. And yet the site is in Upton rather than Bishop's Waltham. And as from the plan showed earlier on, the applicant owns land bordering a settlement of Bishop's Waltham on the corner of Ashford Lane and Winchester Road. I think that would allow access to the site by foot and by public transport through the bus network, which is much more in keeping with the Take the Lead campaign, which is also referenced in the application. The third thing is the environmental plan. About 90% of the site is proposed to be unknown. Therefore, from May onwards, the likelihood of being able to identify and pick up dog waste, either by the individual sitting in the shelter or by the contractors in long grass, is, I believe, impractical. Therefore, demonstrates environmental risk. If the committee is minded to approve this application, I would like the shelter moved because the shelter, which lies 1.37 metres high, although the hedge is 1.75 metres from the road, the field is half a metre above the road and therefore more than two metres of the field shelter would be visible from the single-track road, not the main road, as described earlier. I'd like to move to the south-west side of the site alongside the car park. That would also make it easier for disabled people or people with disability to get to the shelter. And the last one, the field boundary, the fence you saw there is 1.8 metres high. The western boundary fence is up on the skyline and therefore it's going to be distinctly visible to all the sunbeam.
But I think... I think that's the end of your time. Thank you very much. Members, do we have any questions of clarification? Please, for Mr. Barter. I have a question. So I take it you are a close neighbour?
I live in the Stakes Farm, yes.
Right, and you overlook the whole of this project?
I do.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other question, members? No? Thank you for your time, Mr. Barter. Thank you, Barter. Okay, now we have Mr. Harry Dunford, who is the applicant. Mr. Dunford, you have three minutes. When you're ready, the clock will show the time. Switch on your microphone on the switch at the bottom. Thank you very much.
Chair, councillors, good morning. I am Harry Dunford and I am the applicant for this application. The aim of my proposal is to provide a safe and secure dog-walking facility, allowing local residents to exercise their dogs in a controlled and safe environment. This is important for dogs with social or behavioural difficulties, which cannot be exercised safely in open areas or on public right-of-way due to interaction with other dogs, people and wildlife. The proposal is a suitable diversification to help achieve longer-term viability of our family farming business, which lies within the National Park. It is my own venture for which I will be taking personal responsibility. The location has been carefully considered and access is within the capacity of the existing highway network. Parking for the facility would be within the site. Exclusive booking with time between slots will ensure there is no traffic disruption to safe layout. Outside the permitted hours, the site will be lost. The character is in keeping with the local farm's environment with no fixed infrastructure and no artificial lighting. The site is to be contained with agricultural fencing and a small timber field shelter situated as shown. The site is already well-screwned by mature hedgerows and woodlands. By changing an intensely cropped arable field into grass and wildflowers, it's hoped that biodiversity will be dramatically improved. In the interest of traffic and noise management, the site will only be available for exclusive use by online booking. A limited four-foot dogs per breed will apply. All users must agree to strict usage conditions and commercial dog trainers and professional dog walkers will be permitted from using the site. The existing natural boundary features provide an effective noise battle and additional hedgerow advancing is being incorporated, which would further improve habitat connectivity and soften the visual impact of the site. Overall, my proposal for a much-needed facility to the local community, evidenced by the amount of support and interest generated by the application. The location is well-suited and it complies with the relevant adopted Southland policies, including the dark skies policy. If you're minded to grant this application, I'd hope to operate on Sundays, remembering that weekends are often the only time that people have to exercise their dogs. The proposal is well-screwned, low impact and is significantly convenient, harness wildlife habitats, amenity and biodiversity. Following a surge in dog ownership and the public's newfound interest in the rural environment and countryside, combined with adequate garden size and new developments, this activity cannot play a base in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunford. Members, do we have any questions of clarification? Yes, we have a couple. Councillor Adam.
Look, Chair. Mr. Dunford, explain to me how you're going to pick up and clear dog mess, please?
Yes, so I'm a visitor site twice a day, in the morning and evening. I actually live in another Upton, so a few minutes down the road. And all users would be required to pick up waste when they're using the site. If they didn't, I would check it twice a day.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning to you. You mentioned twice, local residents, local community. Where is your target? Which community is it? Upton or Bishop's Waltham?
Well, the nearest comparable sites to this are in East Mill and Hambledon. So I'd be looking at the Upton Bishop's Waltham fairing catchment area, which is within a few miles.
Earlier, you heard from the first speaker that there were three sites in very close proximity. When you chose your site, did you give any attention to how people get to you?
I think, based on the location, the vast majority of people will drive to the site because, you know, the purpose of the facility is to allow them to exercise dog, which otherwise wouldn't be walked on public right-of-way in parks, et cetera. One thing to note with the other sites in the local area is several of those are designed for dog training and operated by dog training classes rather than open exercise in a controlled and secure environment.
Councillor Brock.
Thank you. So just to confirm that I heard the word correctly. You said professional walkers and trainers will be prohibited?
Yes, it would be, yeah.
So if you have somebody book, you know, the site online and like me, they... In my parish, there are many people that walk their dogs on local playing fields and those are let out. And they take to congregating and meet friends. So would you envisage two people meeting at your location to exercise their dogs at the same time?
I would envisage a maximum of two people, hence the vision for two car parking spaces. Obviously, the site's limited to four dogs per usage slot. The average number of dogs in the area is 1.3 dogs per home. So I think the likelihood of more than two users is very slim. Obviously, it's for exclusive use booking only as well. So it would be potentially a person booking and a friend.
On your terms and conditions, you made that clear that it's restricted. You know, one person can look and invite friends, but no more than two cars parked there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Reference has been made to the shelter and the fact that it can be moved on some sort of sludge stuff. So do you... Is it to be located in the same place all the time? Or do you envisage it being moved if the ground by pests travel too much and wanted to have access?
I'd happily move it wherever it was needed. It'd be the most acceptable location, really. That's the whole purpose of it, movable. Like you say, if the area underneath the field shelter was getting muddy in the winter, you could move it a few metres onto some fresh ground. But the intention would be to put it on a wood chip base. So you should think avoid that happen.
So it would be somewhere in the perimeter that you would be happy to have any area confined to smaller locations and so on?
Yeah, always, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Dunford, I notice you're going to put in a deer fencing. I know what that is. And I know the purpose of it is to keep deer out of your patch. But it also keeps hares out of the patch as well. Now, you're going an SSI woodland to the south of you and you've got a small patch of woodland to the north. So deer are going to be moving from one site to the other. It is laid pasture, naturally seeding, as you say. Although the photograph shown there, that's certainly not pasture, no. It's what that picture you're seeing from the officer is of an arable farmland just after it's been seeded. Or just before it's been seeded, but certainly it's waiting for a crop to grow in. Now, are you aware that...
Frank, Frank, sorry. You're not actually using your microphone. Could you just speak into the microphone?
Are you aware that a field that is left, an arable field is left, often will have a crop or crops that's been in that field before going up again? Whether that be flax or whether it be wheat, barley or whatever. It won't just be regular grass ass from a pasture. Now, the issue again is the places he has to be removed because that carries disease and that's got an impact on the wildlife. Can you tell me how you're going to contend with these features? A, hares going to bear and stopping dogs on your land chasing those hares. Deer won't get in because they can't get through that fencing. That's why it's that tall. They can't jump over it again. Equally, dog can't jump that, which is important. But what about the gate? How is that going to stop dogs leaving that field? If you're talking about dog walkers, they won't have control of those dogs unless they're on this.
Thank you, Councillor Pearson. I think that's a lot more question. Thank you.
Sorry, there's a lot of questions there. Can you explain?
Councillor Dunford, thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr. Dunford, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. So I'll start off with the site as it currently is. So the field has been in our arable rotation. It was owned last year. And so, you know, if, when it comes to establishing a grass well, I actually established it in the autumn in order to get a decent establishment on the basis that it could always go back and sprout in the spring. On hares, so the other half of the field will remain in arable production. So on our farm at home, I'm obviously well into the wildlife and biodiversity. Hares tend to live in the arable fields, on the stubble, in the margins. And they're more active at night time. So I don't foresee them getting into the site, like you said. We also, which wasn't shown on the plan or shown in the detailed plan, the proposal is to have a six-metre grass margin around the outside of the fence. So essentially, this, you know, allows anything that would have been cut through the field to go round the field. And inside the area, we would have brass that has been planted, but also some wildflower planting. So it could actually offer balance to the, you know, habitats in the area. Because essentially, we still have over 150 acres of arable cropping with arable habitats for hares, for deer. But we'll also have nectar mixes with wildflowers, pollen, clover, et cetera, for bumblebees and insects, which are more likely to work alongside the dog-walking use. And the final one, the security. So the site would be stocked, netted. Your deer start fencing, as we've already covered. This will include the gates. So essentially, you open the gates, which will be of the same style. So six-foot dog roof, drive-in, close the gate behind you. And that's when you let your dog out of the car. So there's no risk of the dog getting out of the field between the car and the field. Hopefully, that covers everything.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunford.
Thank you, Councillor Pearson. We have two more with questions. Councillor Edwards, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just a very quick clarification. I understand you wish to open on Sundays for this purposes. Does that mean you would be open seven days every week?
Opening on Sundays would be preferred, as I've already covered. That is when the vast majority of the general public have time to exercise their dogs. I'd obviously be happy to go on public holidays and we have got restricted hours in place. Although, yes, like you say, if Sundays, on a general week, it would be seven days.
I think in the conditions, the hours of use don't actually, at the moment, include Sundays. Councillor Reed, did you have another?
Sorry, Chair. Just a quick clarification. Presumably, your clients will walk a certain amount of time. Is there gaps between the times? Otherwise, your liability to have more than two cars on the side of the town is possible?
Yeah, so booking would be made in advance and online and you'd be booking a 50-minute time slot within an hour window. So essentially, you book from 9:00 to 9:50 and the next user would book from 10:00 to 10:50, giving that window. So is that like that?
Thank you. Councillor Brock, very briefly, please.
No, thank you. It was just to clarify the distance. If we were to introduce a condition permitting the shed and saying that it mustn't be more than 20, 25, whatever metre each from the car park in order to address its location. Have you got a distance that you would prefer to us to consider rather than my trying to think of one?
I personally just think anything within the region of about, what, 25 to 50 metres? It's a fairly flat area, so I'm not too concerned over how large the distance is.
Thank you, Mr. Dunford. I think that's the end of your grilling. Thank you very much. Okay, we now move back to the officer. Do you have anything to add following the public participation, Hannah?
No, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Mrs. Pinnock.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to pick up on a couple of points that we had during the presentations there and following some of the questions. The structure that's proposed would need planning commissioners to be moved elsewhere on the site. So I think that's something to bear in mind. The fact that it's on skis, I think, in my view, is a material. Actually, this application seeks its commission in the location shown on the plans. If it were to be moved, that would be a planning matter. And that would need a variation to the plans, in my view, Chair. And I think the other point that we heard about was the hours of use. I think the condition, as you rightly point out, does suggest no use on a Sunday. And that was at the request of our environmental health team on noise issues. So I think at the moment, the office is not proposing to amend that condition, Chair.
Thank you for that. Our vacation was finished. Councillor Brock, do you have a question for the officer?
Yes, I do. My pack didn't show the location of the shelter. So I'm sorry if I've asked questions that were inappropriate, but I wasn't in a position to see where the location had been specified.
Perhaps we could put that picture up on the screen so that everybody can see it. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any questions for Hannah, please? Thank you, Councillor Reed.
Chair, it's under the principle of development. This is a very strange one in the sense that we're asking for a change of use of land that still will rely on agricultural land surrounding it. What would be the status of this land if this particular operation ceased to exist? Would it return to agricultural? Because it is surrounded by agricultural land, so...
Hannah?
Thank you, Chair. I suppose, once you change the use to the dog exercise thing... Julie, please correct me for a wrong understanding, gentlemen. Change the use for that kind of dog.
I think, generally, the answer is that the current use would be the authorised use. And if that use, you know, ceased, then this would still have an authorised use for someone else. It's not possible to use it as a dog-walking exercise. I'm not sure if it could revert to agriculture. Our legal advisor could help, I think. But Chair, I was just going to add that change to agriculture, it doesn't require a planning permission. So if a future owner or indeed this one decided to revert to agriculture, planning permission wouldn't be required.
Thank you.
Councillor Russell.
Hello, Chair. I just want to know how many holes in the fence for animals we've proposed?
Thank you, Chair. And I believe the net and post for the deer boat, I don't know how many holes are in it, but it allows...
All animals go through them. They need to go through.
They go through the net and the fence.
Every 100 metres?
I'm sorry, I won't be a translator. I don't know exactly. I think that would be a question.
Councillor Pearson.
Talking about the size of the holes, a badger couldn't get through the holes in that fence. And yet there are badgers in the area. Hares possibly could. Fox, fox in the area, could they get through that fence? It's to keep deer out and to stop most medium to large-sized dogs. But small dogs are... But small dogs are even dangerous.
Chair, I think we don't know the answer to that. At your permission, you could ask the applicant, couldn't you? But obviously, we've finished with speaking. But, you know, I'll ask a second, I'll know the answer, Chair, if you want to hear it.
Mr Dunford, would you enlighten us, please, as to the size of the gaps in the fence and what animals can, can and can't get through it?
The size of the gaps, I suppose, depends on the specification of the fence. But as you discussed, I'd imagine that hares would be able to get through, but badgers and foxes wouldn't. The proposal with the margin around the outside, which was to be maintained as grass and six metres, is the way in which we see, you know, animals would have been crossing the site, still getting rounds. But mainly two habitats which are connected up is regular as cops and the cop in the middle, which is uninterrupted by the fence line. So that's how we perceive animals going around the site.
Thank you very much. Any more questions for our officer members? No?
You can go through the cameras.
No, I'm taking the whole report because it's quite short.
Yeah, of course, I've got some.
Okay, oh, thank you, councillor Reed. Go ahead.
Under use and management of the land, we refer to the proposed opening, operating times, should I say. And I noticed that we say nine PM, eight PM or sunset. Surely would it not be sensible to put not the time stroke sunset, whichever is the earlier? It's something that we've done in the past, many years ago, honestly.
Thank you, Chair. We're happy to add that, so in the winter months, when we close the shut-in. So we could set a trigger.
And moving on to the noise impact, Chair, if I may. I'm still trying to see where the cops is situated to the south west. And that will have an effect on the properties to the north east, where the stables are, and I think it's called the brewery. As I said, there'll be nothing between them. The cops isn't between them.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, the hours of use control any potential doors that may come from the site. But as Mr Dunford has clarified, it's going to be restricted to the maximum of four dogs. So that should minimise the noise itself. And the cops itself is very well established. And I do believe that the distance between the site and those neighbouring properties, there's more than enough.
Moving on to the ecology and why I don't know, sir. Would I be correcting the second to last line? The planning condition is four? It's the only one you have, you might forget the number of it. It is, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Okay, no more question? Oh, councillor Bronk.
I've got reservations at the wording of the condition seven. It makes reference to calling adults being kept to a minimum. But I think that's quite vague. And a procedure for noise complaints, including prohibiting customers from use of the site following a complaint. So that means that any form of complaint, whether it's valid, reasonable, would prohibit somebody from making another booking. Surely, we would want it to be a reasonable, valid complaint and that the customer has not undertaken to prevent recurrence of the cause of the complaint. Just to ban somebody because somebody lodges a complaint without merit, I think wholly unreasonable for us to impose on anybody.
Thank you, Chair. And I do believe that any form of complaint or acknowledgement to the environmental health...
To environmental health, they can deal with it under their powers, statutory nuisance, et cetera. But equally here, the operational management plan gives the applicant and us an opportunity to consider how they would deal with customers if there are noise complaints. And we would have to agree those details. And we will consult with our environmental health colleagues on the proposals that come forward as part of the operational management plan. So as we can set a regime for dealing with that. But I do take your point that, you know, you wouldn't want necessarily, it needs to be a founded complaint rather than a malicious one or something else. And obviously, those are the methods that can come out in the further detail. Chair, I'm satisfied the condition can manage that with in consultation with our environmental health team.
Councillor, would you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm going back to hours of use, as we had a discussion about dusk rather than a certain hour. I'm wondering whether we should be considering a dawn as well. The sun may start with actually being in the dark for about the guidelines of the year if we're concerned about light pollution and noise disturbance. I would suggest that we bring it. There's something more flexible as a starting time also.
Chair, I think my view is that seven o'clock is a reasonable time in the morning. There is another condition after condition five that talks about external lighting. If there was to be a proposal for lighting, we would require that detail. So in my view, and obviously, this is the view of our environmental health colleagues, who are professionals in this field, they are better side of that start time in terms of statutory noise nuisance. So I wouldn't necessarily want to look to change that, you know, in enforceability terms. You know, when there's, I know we can map that out, those timeframes, but I think this would be a better timeframe at the start, Chair.
Okay, oh, councillor Bentox, a question.
On the face of it, yeah, I don't think we could just say daylight hours, but ends in it.
You know, the summer, summer, four o'clock in the morning, you don't want dog parkings.
Yes, well, I guess we'd have to have early minutes as well, yes.
It's the way it is.
Yeah, okay.
I think we've definitely just answered it, thank you, councillor Bentox. Okay. Right, I think we are now in debate. Thank you. Councillor Pearson, before you start, councillor Brookes, could you just turn on your mic, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about this one. It's suddenly recent times getting a plethora of applications on the creation of exercise fields, which in many ways could be arguably desirable, particularly if you're an urbanised and you want to somewhere to let your dog run free. Dog running free in the countryside has a quite different definition. And while the applicant is proposing putting in an efficient fence in the form of a time, I would recommend as a condition, that fence should be perhaps embedded into a hedge. And only from a sandproofing point of view, but also from an environment point of view. You wouldn't be able to see the fence. The animals would very quickly realise they could have got through that hedge in the fastest there. I have similar fences around my garden at home, so I know how efficiently they do work. And they're all embedded in hedges. The other issue I'm concerned about is the control of noise and the removal of phieses. Litter is quite easy to move, it's quite visible, but not if the grass grows high, unless there's a regular mowing of some source that is not proposed, not part of the application, nor should it be. But trying to locate the phieses, and I'm concerned about disease here, and transmission of disease from dog phieses to the wildlife, and indeed to other dogs, if it comes to that. The noise issue concerns me again. I think just about every councillor around here has known the process by which you make complaints about noise. The complainant has to fill out a diary. And when you're dealing with dogs, it's very, very difficult. Because dogs only visiting the sites are going to make a noise briefly, then they're gone. So there's nothing that's going to register on the noise complaint people as far as the animal welfare people are concerned. There's nothing to act on. I've had this experience, again, in my parish at home. Now, I don't know whether Mr Dunford is going, how he's going to deal with this. But the conditions relayed down here, it says it's Mr Dunford's responsibility to control these dogs, or at least as far as the park is concerned. Well, actually, I think you'll find it's actually the dog walker's responsibility, not so much Mr Dunford's. And they're the ones, by the dog owners. Then our noise protector, who can say, well, who owns this dog or these dogs? It's not the dog walker, it's the person down the chain, making it even more difficult to control noise. Now, we talk about Stakes Farm, but there are also houses in the opposite direction. The entrance to Stakes Lane, there's one, two, three houses down there. Lord Oakham is not that far away. And barking dogs in a quiet countryside travels quite a way. The idea of being muffled by these woodlands frankly is rising. I mean, this doesn't work. And when I got issues with barking dogs about 600, 700 metres from me, they're there to protect horses and stables. So that's it. This one concerns me a lot. On the face of it, the applicant, I don't know any policies that should stop this. The lighting issue, we know this. Again, what happens if portable lights go in? That's not covered by the South Towns planning application. Again, I've got experience of this. Tennis court just across the lane from where I live, of what will portable lights in? I don't expect to turn down permanent lights, so they're portable lights in, which makes a mockery of that policy of National Park. Now, it'd be car lights in this case. And yes, we're saying there shouldn't be anywhere there in the dark. Very difficult, if you're talking about dusk or twilight, very difficult. Let me see. I think sunrise and sunset is much better one. You've got a fixed time on that one. And dusk, what is dusk? What is twilight? It's, there is a definition, but it's not one that Mr Dunford could really operate very comfortably. So I do have concerns about this. I mentioned my environmental concerns, biodiversity concerns. I mean, it's, yes, animals could go around here, large animals. But anything that's large enough to stop going through that fence, of course, fox could get through remotely small gaps, so can badgers. But if they chase my dog, how do they get back out again? Quite a different situation. There's a growing number of these things, right? I've got one application waiting to come. I don't know whether it's, this, this is my precedent, this one. There's one in Denweald, which I don't get constant complaints about, so I don't doubt councillor Reed is one.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Any other contributions? Councillor Reed?
Chair, the only thing I will say is with regards to the hours, as I started, or sunset, whichever is the earlier. Sunset is a known time daily. So dawn isn't, but sunset is. So if those words are incorporated into it, then that to me would satisfy me. With regard to everything that councillor Pearson said, there is some truth in it. The concern was from the opening speaker that there were three other areas in close proximity. But from what I gather, they're dealing with a slightly different dog training element rather than letting loose and let them run. I agree that keeping animals in or out is a problem. And it will involve problems, but as long as they have that ability, for small animals to get in and out, and it doesn't jeopardise their lives if dogs are chosen up and what have they. I can't see anything in this application, but we could hang on, I can, this is, other way, yes.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Eaming?
Chair, I'll share some of councillor Pearson's concerns on this. I'll firstly prefer to see it as age. He's rated around the age of the offenceee as that's a much better ecological way of doing things. They also have the most protected wildlife. So I would like to have seen that as incorporated into this. But pardon, I cannot see any other reason for rejecting this.
Councillor Bronk?
Thank you. I mentioned the dog walkers near me. And I have a footpath up behind my house, up to the South Towns. And it's disappointing to see how many dogs stray from the footpath and across the arable fields. So I welcome the initiative to provide a fenced area for dogs to be exercised where they're not piling other farmers' crops. I'm just disappointed that it's not within our unit to extend the hours to Sundays because there are plenty of other areas, open, public open spaces where dogs roam. And they're not restricted, parish council's not restricted from allowing dogs on its water meadows. And I think this is a number of that feta where it could be to not only the applicant's benefit, but other persons who want to take their dogs out on weekends. I intend to support the applicant, but I'm disappointed by the way in which the operation would be petted.
Chair, perhaps it might be helpful that I add for the benefit, councillor Bronk, that if somebody were to propose in second changes to the hours, that would be something you could consider, but that's a matter for the committee.
Thank you. I will accept in due course a proposal to amend the days of operation. We've already, I think, agreed the hours of operation. Okay, any more contributions to the debates? No, I'd just like to say, I think it's refreshing to see diversification in France. I know they're all having a difficult time. There's a clear need for this sort of provision. And I think the, the barking will be controlled by the operational management plan that has to be agreed. And in fact, regular exercise will stop dogs from wanting to bark too much anyway. It's part of a problem that we have in communities, is that dogs are left without exercise and they just constantly bark. So let's get those dogs out and exercised. So I'm perfectly happy to support this application. I think all the other issues have been dealt with. Okay, so I think we have two proposals to change the hours of operation. Councillor Reed, is yours the sunset one?
Chair, whatever the thing is, I think, or, I forgot what the centre, or sunset, whichever is earlier.
Is earlier, okay. So can I, do you have a second for that? That could be to councillor Pearson. Is that agreed, members? Agreed, okay. The second proposal from councillor Bronk that we should take out the, the reference to Sundays not being used. So we would just say no use on bank holidays. Presumably, the same time for Saturday then. The same hours of operation for Sunday and Saturday. Is that what you're proposing, councillor Bronk? So it's on page 21, number five.
It is quite clear. Or earlier.
Earlier, it's done, sunset, yeah. Do you have a second for that proposal? Councillor Bentox, thank you very much.
Chair, before you put for the vote, can we be just reminded of how Sundays were originally taken out? I think the officer who came to speak was at the request of the environmental health team.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, it's at the request of the environmental health officer who stated... I have concerns regarding the requested hours and ask that conditions made to reduce the hours of use of the field to protect the immunity of the area. I would suggest the following hours to be limited, seven till nine Monday, Friday, nine till five on Saturdays, and no use of Sundays and bank holidays.
Councillor Edmonds?
Thank you, Chair. I asked a question of clarification to establish whether if we agreed Sunday, it would be a seven day a week operation. And I'm wondering now whether one way around this might be to say that it was not a seven day a week operation. There needed to be one day for the reasons made by the environmental health officer about being the only one.
Chair, I think, I mean, it's, as Miss Dunford has said, it's up to you as a committee to, you know, if you wanted to have a motion to amend condition five, you can certainly do that. All we've recommended to you is based on our, on our environmental health's professional advice that they believe that Sundays, and they're called the bank holidays, I'd like to change that to public holidays, Chair, as well. You know, on the days of the week when, you know, households are at home, they expect a peace and quiet. And it's probably a time when perhaps they receive more complaints based on their experience. So that's a submission on my part. But equally, I do understand the point about that, you know, weekends are when we're at home and our leisure time perhaps, and people may want to use this business. I can see both sides of the coin. And I suppose it's really up to you as members perhaps to make a decision for whether you think that Sunday... Sunday hours are reasonable. I'm not sure taking away a different day that we would make the difference in environmental terms. So I think, you know, if you're minded to amend the condition, I would certainly suggest you opt for the Sunday hours matching the Saturday hours, which are slightly shorter, aren't they, or sunset, whichever is the earlier. And then saying no use on public holidays is your third bullet point, chair, but it really is a matter for the committee, having heard from us and the public speakers, chair.
Thank you, Mr Sillick. Councillor Pearce, no comment.
Yes, as I remind, when there's a frequent comment in planning inspectors thing, they're talking about issues that might relate to noise, is that weekends are a time, and indeed, summer nights, when neighbours might reasonably expect, I think is the phrase used, if you're all a bit correct on that, might reasonably expect to have silence. Now, this applies in the countryside, just as much in the towns. It's interesting with members who have rural wards more concerned about this, and those members like urban wards. And I think really is an issue, it's not black and white issue, it's an opinion issue. The Crow Act.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. I think you've made your point. I think you've made your point.
Well, I don't mind that because it concerns me about this. So, well, let's just have it open on the top. Well, this is nonsense. We have a record petition.
That is not the proposal in front of this councillor Pearce, but thank you very much. Thank you very much. Just a moment, please. Yes, I just wish that my neighbour on a Sunday sometimes would realise that Sunday evening at nine o'clock is not the time to start cutting her lawn, but anyway. Councillor Bentix?
Thank you very much. My, I have had dogs in the past. And when dogs are out on their walks, that's not the time they're barking. The time they're barking is when they're at home protecting their owners. And that's the, you know, you have these dogs in the field near you, and I don't think many of them are barking. They may be crossing the field, but they're not causing a disturbance by of noise. So I think we're overdoing the noise problem.
Thank you councillor Bentix. Right, okay. I think we'll just take a vote on this, because I think we could, it's something that's, that's, if we've kept the the conditions as they are here, except for place bank holiday with public holiday, then perhaps the applicant could come back in, do post to the planning departments and ask to change that if everything is going really well. I think it might be a suck it and see thing. But if members would like to see them able to operate those reduced hours on a Sunday as well as a Saturday, I think we should have that opportunity to vote. So can I see those in favour of including Sunday with Saturday with the reduced hours of opening?
One, two. That's three, chairman.
And those against?
One, two, three, four, five.
So I'm afraid that falls. So we are left with the slightly amended conditions, which just changes bank holiday to public holiday. And the, the change to sunset or seven P M. Mondays to Fridays, depending on which is the earlier. So on that basis, if there are no other, and we included the update about the operation management plan, if there are no other comments, proposals, this application is recommended for approval. So could I see those in favour of approving this application? And those against?
Sorry, it was eight, one.
Okay, thank you very much, members. We'll now have a five minute break, so we'll come back at half past ten. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we now move on to item number seven on the agenda, which is land adjacent to Northfield House Station Road, Sweet Burton. And the opposite presenting is Lisa Booth. Welcome Lisa. And please carry on.
Thank you, chairman. I just want to have a quick further update. There was, since I didn't report, there's a further letter of objection.
Chair, did you ask to stake that master? Sorry, I can't hear.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And sorry, there's been one further letter of objection. It's been received. And it provides further comments about the ownership of the briderway by the old rectory and unauthorized use of it by the applicant. Thank you. And so this proposal is for the extension and conversion of the existing garage or storage building for use as a holiday let as an existing pressure insight located to the north of Northfield House, which you can see on the plan as outlined in red, which is just off Station Road in Saverton. There are existing stables and a little exercise area, and there are fields divided for horse grazing. The subject building is a small storage building to the south of the stables. The plans have been amended since submission duty objections from Hampshire County countryside planning rights of way and have removed the use of the adjacent briderway for vehicle traffic to access the holiday let. The amended plans now show that the existing southern access or station road will be utilised for parking for up to two cars for occupiers of the holiday let, which you can see marked in red on the plan to the south. The main policy in respect of this proposal is S D twenty-three, sustainable tourism. The site is located within a defined countryside and proposes new tourist attractions or leisure facilities in the countryside, which generally smoothes down reused existing buildings to ensure that activities are maintained at a level that can be accommodated without harm to the local environment. The original building was once in the ownership of Northfield House, which is just to the right of the Red and Blue lines. And as I was, there's no planning records for the erection of this storage building. It's assumed that it was permitted development is within the confines of Northfield House. Once Northfield House was sold, the same area and paddocks were retained by the previous owner's daughter, who's the applicant, and separated from Northfield House curbside. The proposal is to extend and convert the existing storage building into a small one bedroom holiday let. There is a whole network of brideways and footpaths accessible from the site. And although, as with most of all sites, it is not a particularly sustainable area, the site provides a means for sustainable travel by sustainable means such as walking, cycling or horse riding. The applicant owns the adjacent horse trekking business, which has been in operation for some years. The application for the holiday let is being considered on its own merits. The plans have been amended to show that the parking spaces for two cars will be provided using the southern access. The details of the parking area construction being submitted, which is condition four. Although this is some distance from the holiday let, a protocol on where to park and other details will be made available to all occupiers upon booking. It's not considered to be an onus on those using the holiday let, and it's no different to many other places where you have to walk to your accommodation. The use of the southern access has arisen from the objection, as I've said before, of the rights of way officer Hampshire County countryside planning having regard to policy S D twenty in regard to additional traffic, vehicle traffic using the briderway. The briderway is owned by a third party and the applicant does not have specific permission to use the briderway. It has been used for another few years to access the site by vehicles, but this is a separate civil matter between applicant and the owner of the briderway. The design of the converted outbuilding would not change significantly from existing with a small extension to the front of the building, resulting in a building that measures nine point four five metres by three point four metres with a ridge height of three point eight metres. The extension is considered to be in keeping with the existing building. The materials will be rendered in stone timber with a tiled roof. Due to the existing boundary fencing and hedging, the building would not be any more apparent from the briderway with the view remaining as existing, with the extension being away from the boundary of the right way. Therefore, it's considered that the proposal will not impact to a harmful extent on existing landscape or characters of the area and is considered to be in accordance with policy S D form five, that the extension would not significantly alter the landscape due to its designer scabbing and keeping of the existing building. It's also not considered there'll be an impact on the residential amenities of nearby residential properties from the intended use for holiday accommodation, as it is a small one bedroom unit which will limit activity and noise on the site and the number of people that are able to use it. The nearest neighbour is beyond a dense tall hedge, which provides adequate screening and the other nearest neighbour being on the other side of the briderway. It's considered that proposal is in accordance with the policy S D five and there's no harmful impact on the surrounding uses or amenities. And I'll just take you through some photographs. Well, this is stars where the site is. And this is a network of footpaths and brideways. Quite extensive round here. This is the outbuilding that's to be converted and extended on the area. This is the briderway. In stable, one of the stables. This is the southern access. It's just a view of Station Road. And this is the briderway. Thank you, chairman. And the proposal is considered to be accepted in principle, subject to the conditions set out in your thoughts. Of course, that's up on the field. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we now move to public participation. We have two objectors, and this is Martin Yu and Mr Miller. Are you both planning to speak or is one of you going to speak and one be available to answer questions or?
I'm trying to, but it seems to mark stand and don't expect him to be there.
Oh, right, okay, so we know time. So, Mr Miller, you have three minutes. There's a clock there that tells you when the timer's running down. You switch on the microphone at the bottom. There's a button. The red lights will come on to show you it's working. And when you're ready, you have three minutes from when you start speaking. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm one of the neighbours, immediate neighbours across.
Mr Miller, I'm sorry, it's probably better if you stay sat down actually. I do apologise. Hopefully, you'll hear from yours. That's much better. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm a neighbour from across the pride path. And I'm speaking on behalf of several presidents of Saverton as the following comments regarding the planning officers report. Section four is consultations in which Saverton Parish Council strongly objects. Section five has representations, H C C Countryside strongly objects. Twenty-five addresses in Saverton strongly objects. There are eleven supporting letters, all from outside Saverton. These individual representations, Saverton Parish Council and H C C Countryside are the most relevant parties and all object when the priority statutory purpose of the S T N D designation is to conserve and enhance the natural beauty, wildlife and cultural heritage. It's not evident that any consultation is taking place with any of these objecting parties and there's been much consultation with the applicant, which suggests bias. All other opinions that do not object only support by default with little or no reason. Section ten, reason for recommendation and conditions. There is no or little reason given for recommendation. After eighteen months, there are still thirteen unenforceable conditions proposed. We suggest that approval can only be decided for this quantity of importance of information still unanswered. Section eight, impact on residential amenity and section eleven, crime and disorder implications. We, this is me and my wife, have lived peacefully as neighbours for forty-four years and without disturbance until two thousand and seventeen, when the trekking business started without planning permission. Since then, the briderway between Station Road and the trekking entrance has been the scene of many crimes, including theft, damaged property, assault, dangerous driving, verbal abuse, vandalism, harassment and bad language, as reported to and filed by Hampshire Police. This has not been considered. A holiday let with double the number of outside visitors resulting in an unacceptably increase in the risk of a further crime associated with this site. Furthermore, the planning officer appears to have failed to realise that the additional heavy goods traffic heavy goods traffic required to construct and service this property will have to use the briderway as access. This will be a criminal offence under section thirty-four of the Road Traffic Act nineteen eighty-eight. These criminal disorder indications should alone be reason for refusal. In summary, in addition to all these issues pertaining to the briderway and crime, you've been asked to decide on the building plan in the wrong place with questionable use, thirteen properly unenforceable conditions and unenforceable pieces of.
Mr Miller, I'm afraid your time is up. If you could just stop, I'm sure that members will have questions of clarification for you. So if you could just wait there.
Okay.
Members, do we have any questions of clarification? No, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr Miller. If you could switch off your microphone, that would be great. Thank you very much. We now move on to the parish council representative, Mr Neil Finley. Mr Finley? Hi. You have three minutes. You switch on the microphone at the bottom when you're ready. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm making these comments on behalf of Sylburn Parish Council, who object to this application for the following reasons. The applicant does not have consent to use the existing site access adjacent to the briderway as a means of access for this new use. The application provides no detail on access to the site apart from showing a small area adjacent to Station Road, which is remote from the site. The access strategy relies on the use of a protocol, yet there is no condition that this needs to be complied with. The protocol specifically advises arrivals on foot to use a pedestrian gate directly from the access track, which we assume means the briderway. We do not believe this is lawful because the landowner has not given his consent. The protocol states that if required, luggage and people can be transported by the owner by a quad bike or similar. Without any access track, this would be across open fields, in all weathers and potentially in the dark. We would suggest that this is not sustainable and over time it will become easier to simply use the briderway. HCC Countryside objects because they have similar concerns regarding the increased use of the briderway and potential criminal use. Finally, there is no reference to how service vehicles to access the site. If the committee is minded to grant consent, an implementation of the protocol should be made a condition, but then only if it can be measured and monitored satisfactorily and safely without relying on local residents. In conclusion, it is clear that there is no coherent access strategy. It appears that approval is recommended solely because it is in accordance with the South Downs policy on sustainable tourism. However, any consent which then relies on measures which are potentially impossible to implement and enforce is clearly flawed. For this reason, Sylburn Parish Council would urge the committee to refuse the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Finley. That can be so brief. Okay, members, questions of clarification? Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. References have been made to the briderway and I think you just indicated it is a registered briderway and the Hampshire County Council's briderway. Do you know what number it is?
I don't actually, but I think it is in the committee report from HCC, I think. Briderway one B, I think it is.
As I missed it, my fault. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions of clarification? Counselor Pearce.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Finley, can I collect the map we've seen of the briderways on, as shown here, which is page fifty-eight of our report? At least I can look that up on the screen.
Yes.
That's the one. Please can you try to indicate, I mean, you can point it back to where you sit and indicate which actually is the briderway we're talking about, because that's a mixture of one briderway, which is the Men Valley Walk, as conversion of the old Men Valley River Line into a briderway, which actually is what the concern is about. The rest are a mixture of old green lanes and footpaths or country lanes and useless footpath.
Yes, the briderway question is, there's the, the red star is the site itself and so it's. Yes, so it's the short stretch immediately to the, to the north of that. So it just runs from Station Road to the, what is the straight line, which is the old railway, which is the main valley track.
Correct. It's the, it's the old railway line that the concern is about. That is specifically, and that's the one the photograph shows, at least it shows, specifically for pedestrians, cyclists, horse riders. Continual concern from the rights of way officer of the county about quad bikes going on to this and motor cross bikes going on to this and causing all sorts of damage and burns, which is one of the things I suspect Sylburn Parish Council concerned about, as they mention this on page thirty-nine of the, which Lisa summarized.
Okay, thank you, Mr Pearce. And I don't think that was a, anyway, so do we have any more massive clarification for Mr, for Counselor Finley? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Finley. We now move on to the supporter, Ian Donahue. Ian? Ian, there you are.
Yeah, I've been hiding behind the camera.
Thank you. You know the drill, you have three minutes when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Chairman, Counselors, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. The application relates to an existing equestrian enterprise adjacent to the former Men Valley Railway. The applicant runs a pony trekking business and has done so for many years. The proposal is to provide a modest extension to an existing building and convert it to a one-bedroom holiday let. We work closely with the case office to provide additional information and amendments, which is included treats and ecology reports, information about usage of the briderway and amended layout to the authority. The application's been with the authority for nineteen months and the principal delay has been due to the proposed use originally of the briderway. The applicant has used the briderway for the equestrian enterprise. However, as you will see from the committee papers, there has been objections for the use of the briderway for the holiday let. Due to this objection, an alternative access has been proposed from the south, which is within the applicant's ownership. Adjacent to the proposed access, two parking spaces will be provided with the ability to turn on site. The applicant has no objection to the condition proposed about the access as indicated by the planning officer. In addition to this, the applicant would manage the operation to ensure that there will be no vehicle access for users of the holiday let along the briderway. There would be access, obviously, for walkers and cyclists. Any holiday makers luggage would be transported from the parking area to the holiday let. This is easily managed as a trekking business operates seven days a week. I have checked through recent applications for holiday lets on the South Downs website and there have been twenty-three granted in the National Park since this application was submitted, including one at Ramstein near Petersfield, where the use of quad bikes to take luggage to camping pods was accepted. With this number of permissions, this clearly shows that there is a policy support for additional tourist accommodation in the National Park. Some of the objections are alluded to other nearby holiday lets. However, as you will be aware, competition is not a planning issue, each application should be judged on its merits. In terms of the objections raised, the office's report has fully addressed all of these. Chairman, Counselors, I hope you can support the office's recommendation and grant final permission.
Thank you very much, Mr Donahue. Do we have any massive clarification for Mr Donahue? Counselor Pearce.
Yes, so Mr Donahue, I'm referring to the existing proposed plans. In the past, the planning committee has objected to the plans that look as though they've been drawn in the back of an envelope. Are there any clear definitions of what the actual dimensions of this building is at present and what the building will be after the proposed extensions and foot in? Other question I might ask about this are matters of building regulation, not of planning. But if photographs have been shown, look to me, this is going to be a converted garage with asbestos-type walls. Is this correct?
Chair, I don't have the exact measurements off the top of my head. I mean, I think the planning officer gave the measurements out when she was talking through on her original presentation. But yes, it will be a converted, there obviously will be no asbestos within there. The original part of the building is the garage and there will be a small extension, but it will all be a modest one-bedroom holiday let.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions of clarification? No, thank you very much. You can turn your microphone off now, Mr Donahue. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Lisa, do you have any comments following the public participation, Chair? No? Okay. Questions for our officer members? Counselor Pearce?
Yes, I can go back down to the dimensions of this building. I know on page forty-seven, Lisa, you say the result of the building nine point four metres by three point four metres with a ridge height of three point eight metres. But it doesn't tell us what the size of the existing garage is, or indeed what the size of the extension is. As you say, I'm referring back to the plans on page fifty-seven. Were they, were they not drawn in the back of an A four envelope?
No, I think what you can see there, I'm assuming they've been drawn on a bigger sized piece of paper, they're hand drawn by an architect, John's our architect, and they're to scale. I have written down the proposed building, but as you can see there from the plan, that it's probably about a third extra. So I would say the original building is probably six metres by three point four.
That's the question we're going to ask for all matters of building regulations, aren't we? We talk about climate emergency and how this complies with the RAN regulations. We're not going to have that information, are we?
No. The, we have policy SD forty-eight, which we do apply in some instances, which is with the three, so it's like you've got the residential and then the non-residential, but it's on, it's not applicable in this instance because of the size of it. So it's not been applied, which asks for, you know, for sustainable use of materials and things like that, that are good on some larger buildings.
So I notice it's on the condition, you're actually asked for these detailed drawings. So if they haven't been handed into you yet, why don't we have them? Or have they been as?
Condition?
It's.
Statistics.
There's so many problems out about the conditions, I don't know if I can see that title. I think it's details of the access track, yeah, condition two, I think it is.
Two?
Yeah.
Two.
Says, in accordance with, non-development research should be carried out in accordance with the plans listed below, under the heading plans referred to in consideration of this application, but are these the plans you're talking about?
Yes, that, yes, that's, we put that on every permission. So I don't know if they've come through, but when the decision comes out, it's, the plans are listed on the bottom. So it's referring to the plans, if you go to page fifty-three, it says plans referred to in consideration of this application. The application has been sent, recommendations made on the basis of the following plans. So we always, each, each decision notice has the list of the plans that apply to that commission.
I'm just going to ask a question about the condition four, details of both hard and soft landscapes. Now, soft landscape acts as landscaping, but the hard landscape, which is the track and the parking place, it's not detailed at all being presented to them.
The, the briderway you're talking about, it doesn't refer to, it's basically purely for the material for the parking spaces.
If the briderway, I'm most concerned about is the Men Valley Railway briderway, a little less concerned about the others, this.
This doesn't refer to, this isn't in relation to anything, because she doesn't own either briderways, so she's not permitted to do any work on them.
Right, thank you very much, Counselor Pearce. You've had enough of biting that cherry.
Obviously a question.
Oh dear, really? Okay, can I just ask about condition five? Are we confident that this covers the questions about access for construction and access for the, for the holiday let? Because there's some concern that the briderway will have to be used for access for construction. So I assume that condition five is looking at alternatives to that. And so if you could just tell me what we envisage in terms of the construction of this holiday let? And also, I can't see any reference to a path or anything being built from the parking area up to the house. So how are they expected to, to access it?
Okay, in regards to condition five, this is applied by Hampshire Highways. They have, over the course of the application, they have spoken at length with Hampshire County Counsell Countryside rights of way officer as well. So this is, this is a construction method statement, so obviously they will provide, we want to try and avoid the use of the briderway and the issues that's caused. And so they need to provide us details of how those materials are, will be transported up to there. And obviously they have the use of the southern access. There isn't any plans to put a pathway from there up through the fields, so there is a gap to the left-hand side, so you have to go around the field and not through the left-hand side and that goes up to the stables. Obviously, if a path was required in future, this is tactically considered.
A specific path would require planning permission, would it? Adam? A specific path would require planning permission? Just depends whether it's an engineering, if it was just, if it was just a, you know, bark or something, it wouldn't require permission for. Other questions, members? Sorry, my, oh, Counselor Reed, thank you.
The chair, we're all terrible, surely we are at the moment. Are we going through the categories or are we?
We are taking the whole report, because again, it's very short. I think we will be taking all the reports all together, all day today, because they're all quite short.
Yes. With the structure, the proposed structure being a conversion from what it currently is, presumably we have to live with what's there already. And I'm looking at page sixty-two, which shows an external light. Now, if you read the report, no external lighting is proposed. However, there is one there already. Does that mean that will actually stay in situ and can be used legally?
I don't, I, there's something that's already there and I don't think we would have the authority to tell them to remove it for anything better than we would have control over it.
Would it be, there are certain questions, or certain statements to be made by the general public. Some of them are of a legalistic nature and outside of what I would call normal planning terms. Maybe if the officer or legal person could explain what we have the ability to do within planning and what we don't.
Yes, this is, Chair, I think the two matters particularly alluded to, there were allegations of crime and disorder, was one of the matters mentioned by one of the speakers. It was an allegation, it's, it's not a planning matter. And even, there is nothing particularly to link it to this proposal in any event, so I don't think that's something you can give any weight to. And the second matter in particular, I think it was the criminal allegation, or the criminal matter related to use of the briderway without permission, that's something that was flagged up by Hampshire County Council, is that the other thing that we look for to counsel? I think actually, the point of that, I think, is quite neatly dealt with by Hampshire County Council. I'll just find the right paragraph, I think we can. Hampshire Highway, say at page, so I'll just get to the right page in the report, because it's page forty-eight. There's been a lot of mention of what Hampshire Highways and so on, so they said. They said there are currently two accesses to the site, one is accessed from the bridleway and the other is further south along Station Road. Hampshire Highways do not have any objections to the existing southern access being used for parking onto two cars. And I think the point of that is that Hampshire Highways have assessed the application on the basis of the bridleway and will not be used as, as part of this application. So I think that's something you can, you can disbar, Chair.
Finally, Chair, if I may, on page sixty, it shows the proposed structure, but in the background on the right-hand side, there is a, what looks to be a mobile home, a mobile home. Can you just add a little bit of history as to what that is?
Yeah, this has been investigated by enforcement, I think it's still ongoing as well, as to allegations of living permanently. I don't think that has been, has come to fruition as yet.
Would it be, that's on page forty-six, the last sentence on page forty-six, under investigation by Manchester City Council and by enforcement.
Yes, it's been a lot, there's been complaints about the use of the tracking business, and that's been investigated and there's no breach. The mobile home has been used, as far as we know, as a day, as far as I know, as a day room. But obviously, there's been phone complaints.
Thank you, Chair.
Which is not part of this application, councillor.
It isn't, obviously, you're inviting, just a little bit.
Yes, thank you, councillor Brock.
Um, lots of the allegations made, there's no bias. Are we able to formally refute that, please?
Mrs Denick? Thank you, Chair. Our statutory duty when we have a planning application in front of us is to assess it in accordance with both national and local plan policy. The applicant submitting an application to us, it's our job to make an assessment based on normal material planning considerations. As part of that, we consult with neighbours, we consult with the parish council. I think the suggestion is we engage with the applicant, that's our job to do that and not the neighbours. We don't go out and actively try and talk to neighbours, and that's a really tricky thing to hear, but we have got their representations in writing and we have regard to those of reaching a planning decision. And I would wish to assure this committee and anyone listening that there's no bias there. It's our statutory role to make planning decisions and recommendations to you today for you to make the formal decision, Chair, so hopefully that covers that matter. Thank you, councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Denick. Okay, are we done with questions? Did you have any more councillor Pearson? You seem to think you might have a lot more on other conditions.
Well, yes, I mean, there are... It's a part, what I'm going to say is partly debate, but it's partly relevant to the question you just asked.
If you could just...
I have a number of concerns.
Keep to a question and then save your concerns with the...
I have a number of concerns about the conditions here, where information is pending. And I consider most of the information that is pending, we should have in front of us so we can make an informed decision about this application. In my opinion, not the officer's opinion, but my opinion, there isn't enough information there for me to make an informed opinion. Now, would you want me to define the particular conditions I'm talking about?
Unless it's a particular question to the officer, councillor Pearson, could you save it for debate, please?
Uh, well...
I mean, it is normal to have conditions that say, you know, this condition, and then we require the applicant to come forward with, with proposals which we will consider, and that is completely normal.
Well, there are certain conditions, there are certain conditions here where information is pending.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I think I will echo your comments really. I haven't seen anything in the conditions proposed here that's unusual. We are being asked today to determine whether the proposal to extend and convert this existing structure into holiday tourism accommodation is acceptable, and I think that's what we're being asked to do. And it's perfectly normal to have conditional planning conditions that require the submission of further technical details, sometimes prior to work commencing, sometimes at a stage after that, and the conditions are specific on that. And there's nothing here, Chair, that leads me to conclude that you shouldn't be making a decision on the proposal today with the caveat that there's certain bits of information that can be detailed out, like there's a hard and soft landscaping, about the construction method statement, the water efficiency information, utility. So there's nothing here, Chair, in my mind, that says that you shouldn't be making a decision on the principle of a conversion and then those technical details that produce the issue to break for its own.
Thank you, Mrs Denick.
Can you give another example of what's certainly concerned? There's nothing in this...
Could you use your microphone if you have a question, councillor?
No, I'll be fine. Too long. There's nothing in the information that is given, I mean, it's good report, I'm concerned about what is not there. Nitrate is mentioned here, it's one of our concerns, and yet there's no information here as how they're going to deal with firewater, or indeed how electricity, if it's not already in this building, and there is an implication because of this floodlight that is there, which is quite contrary to the Scottish policy of the National Park, which may well stay there, because not by the application. Well, we're told that there is enforcement, that's a hanging on this particular site. No details about that. You know, there's so many questions, I mean, well, I'm moving into debate.
I think you are moving into debate, councillor Pearson. So I think we, unless there are any more questions for the officer, we will now move into debate. Councillor Reed?
I think, I am concerned there are another... I thought I spoke loud enough as a member. I am concerned about the quantity of unknowns, as councillor Pearson has already indicated. It does seem an extraordinary number. What I'm failing to get my head around in some respects is the relationship between the parking and the actual unit where the people are going to be going to. As pointed out already, there is no direct route across the owner's land or a direct contact between the two sites. Will that mean that they will use another method of approach, which could well be the bridleway? I don't know. It just worries me, Hampshire County councillor, always very concerned about the bridleways, because once they get wrecked, they are a tickings of a job to put right again. And rightly so, the parish council are concerned with regards to this particular aspect. We have areas of concern with regard to enforcement that are in and around the area. This reminds me of an application that we had on the edge of Newtown, where there was a small structure, more or less the same size as this one, which was asking to do virtually the same thing, and we refused it. Quite categorically, it was ruled out by the members, and I'm not quite sure whether it was an application that was obviously being proposed as for approval or not, but I know it was turned down. That structure is now gone. I just have too many concerns over this in itself, to be able to support the recommendation to approve. I'm just rather worried about it, to say the least.
I'm not sure that being rather worried is a planning reason. So if you could come up with some planning reasons, if you are going to...
Yeah, I'm trying to think of them, but I just don't think this is an appropriate structure to be converted, especially without detailed plans that give us dimensions and materials.
Thank you. Any more debates? Councillor Lee?
Yeah, I share some of those concerns, particularly with the way that the building is going to be accessed. We don't have anything to do with all that. Bear in mind that the African council are not happy with the bridleway being used. I think that it gives us serious concerns, and I'm quite disturbed by that.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say I think that our officers have worked very hard to come up with conditions that do cover the areas that you are concerned about. And I think that I'm confident that so long as these conditions are met, and if they're not, then the planning permission would fall. These, these conditions will cover the areas of concern. I don't think that there's any consideration that the bridleway will be used for access to construction. And that's clearly covered by condition five. And I think that in the normal course of events, there will be an informal path from the parking area up to the cottage. Many holiday areas don't allow parking right next to the chalets, look at Centre Parcs and places. So, I mean, I have absolutely no concerns about that. And certainly no concern that people are automatically therefore going to go down onto the old railway line and start destroying it as well. So I think, I think, I think, given the very considerable conditions which are attached to this application, I'm perfectly happy to support the officer recommendation. I think we do need more holiday accommodation in the South Downs, and this is what this is providing. Do we have any other contributions to debate? No, okay. This application is recommended for approval. Can I see those in favour, please?
That's five, Chair.
And those against?
One. Three, Chair.
And the extensions?
One.
Thank you, that application is approved, thank you. We will now take a ten-minute break for, let's come back at, let's come back at twenty-five past, if you've got time for a quick coffee. Thank you. Right, thank you very much, everybody. This is the planning committee on the 14th of December. It's November 25. We are at item number eight on our agenda, which is Broadview Dean Down Grove, Littleton. And the officer presenting is Catherine Watts. Welcome Catherine. So when you're ready, if you'd like to give your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The application is for a new dwelling to the rear of Broadview on Dean Down Grove in Littleton. This shows the existing site plan. So if we look at the bottom outside the red line, we've got the existing dwelling of Broadview and then the red line denotes the site we developed. Here we have the proposed site plan. So again, towards the bottom of the image, we've got the existing dwelling of Broadview. Then we've got an access track which leads up the side of the property and to form a parking area and garden. And then to the rear of that is the proposed dwelling. Here we have the proposed floor plan. So on the left, we've got the ground floor plan. And on the right, we've got the first floor plan. And then here we have the proposed elevations. If we start from the top left, we've got the south elevation, which is the front. Top right is the east or south elevation. Bottom left is the proposed north elevation, which is at the rear. Here we can see some sections within the site. So if you look at the top image, on the left-hand side, we've got the proposed dwelling. And then on the right-hand side, we've got the form of Lane End, which is the adjacent property to the rear of the site of the proposed dwelling. Then the central image, it shows on the left-hand side the proposed dwelling. And then if we move towards the right-hand side, we've got the site boundary in the middle. And then on the far-right-hand side, we've got the existing dwelling of Broadview. And then if we look at the bottom, again, on the left-hand side, we've got Bay House, which is to the southwest of the proposed dwelling. And we've got Broadview in the middle and behind me, you can see the outline of the proposed dwelling. And then we've got the lane of the property, Valetta, which is to the northeast. Here we have shadow analysis. So just quickly, we've got the shadows of existing and proposed dwellings at different points in the year. So we've got December 21st, March 21st, June 21st and September 21st. And then photographs. On the left-hand side, we can see, this is taken from the road Dean Down Grove. So on the right here is the existing dwelling of Broadview. On the left, we can just see part of Bay House. And to the right of Broadview is Valetta. And then on the right-hand side, taken from the driveway of Broadview, again, we can see the existing dwelling. And to the right, we've got Valetta. Then at the entrance, on the left-hand side of the entrance to the property, we can see Bay House in the background. And then the right-hand photo, again, we're standing adjacent to the side of Bay House. And that's looking down where the proposed access track will be. And the left-hand photo is taken from within the property of Broadview. So we're just past the central part of the house. And we can see Bay House in the distance. And then on the right-hand side, we're within the rear garden of Broadview. And so on the left-hand side, we can see Broadview itself. And on the right-hand side, we can see Bay House. And then on the left-hand side, again, at the rear, in the rear garden, at the end of the photo on the left-hand side, again, it's the existing dwelling of Broadview. And then we can see the boundary between Broadview and Bay House with the tree demarcated by the trees and shrubbery. And on the right-hand side, again, we're looking a bit further towards the end of the plot. And again, this is a boundary treatment along the existing right-hand boundary, just looking down towards the rear of the plot. That concludes the presentation. My recommendation is to permit subject to the conditions outlined in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much, Catherine. Okay, we now go to public speaking. We have two objectors. We have Mark Lynn and Sandy Kinney-Math. If you could, Kinney, Watts, sorry. If you could just indicate which is which. Lovely, lovely. And are you going to share the time between you? You have three minutes between you. Okay, well, there will be a clock started and you will have to just swap between you whenever you're ready. You know when to switch on the microphones in front of you. So when you're ready, you will have three minutes between you. The time doesn't start when you switch on the microphone, but when you start speaking. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I understand this is the only application you'll hear today where nobody is speaking in support of the applicant, not agent, of here. Your case officer has confirmed that the building was overly large, therefore amended drawings had to be submitted by the applicant. These drawings have received a number of objections from the neighbours and a number of reasons, including the fact that the east elevation has only been reduced by 30cm, the west elevation by approximately 70cm and the length of the building reduced by no more than a single metre. Your case officer also confirmed that this is a very narrow plot. Direction of any two-storey dwelling on this plot will lead to shocking loss of privacy and amenity for all immediate neighbours. There will be direct line of sight straight into my daughter's two bedrooms upstairs, evidence there's kitchen, dining room, garden room, bathroom and studio. There will be a new driveway and access built. The access will be immediately next to our access. That's an obvious traffic hazard. My daughter suffers from asthma. Asthma's getting much. This driveway is running right along the length of the border. The increased traffic flow, which doesn't exist at the moment, will cause her further problems and quite simply, she will not be able to use her garden or enjoy her garden. So I know myself and my family have got significant concerns with applicants' conduct to date and from a financial perspective, his ability to complete the work in a professional manner. I would please request that the members of the committee undertake a site visit to full appreciate what is being proposed. Thank you.
Mark Line, Lane End, which is home to myself, my wife and our two children. We have no objection to a bungalow, or shall I say, a house being built. But we do have an objection to the sheer bulk of this proposal and therefore the overshadowing. It's massive. Plus or minus a couple of square metres, it's the same size as Valetta, the new house built in front of Lane End. If Lane End is side by side, then fine, we get it. It follows the building line. But it's not. Lane End is at 45 degrees or 45-degree angle facing towards the proposed developments. Could I request that the councillors come and view the proposal on the ground before making a decision with specific attention to the shadow analysis and the fact it stops at 3pm? The afternoon, an early evening sun from the west in the spring, the summer and the autumn will be completely blocked. The three warmers rooms in our house will be in shadow. That's our bedroom, my office, stroke cave, and our lounge. They will all be in shadow if this proposal is approved, hence our objection. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Members, do we have any matters of clarification for all the speakers? Are you saying that you've seen the shadow analysis that we've been presented with? Are you saying that that is accurate or are you challenging that or what are you saying?
It's accurate. It just doesn't show the full range of hours of the day.
Right, okay. Any other questions? No. Thank you very much indeed, gentlemen. If you'd like to switch off the microphones and stay in the meeting till the end, if you like. Okay, there are no other public speakers. Catherine, did you want to add anything to your report?
No, thank you, Chair.
Wonderful. Members, questions to the officer? And I will take questions on all aspects of the report. Thank you. councillor Bentet.
I don't know if it's a typo error, but on page 68, the building was going to measure 7.8 metres. It's reduced to seven metres. A reduction of approximately 0.3 metres. So there's obviously a mathematical error. Is it 0.8 reduction rather than 30cm? 8cm rather than 30cm?
Okay, Chair. Yeah, the overall length of the building has been reduced from 14 to 13 metres. And I think on the paragraph above that, yeah, the paragraph above that says that the height of the eastern elevation is 7.8 metres and the depth is originally 14 metres. So yes, there's a 0.3 metre reduction in height. Yeah, sorry. I'm just reviewing my reading. Yes, so the eastern elevation has reduced by 0.3 metres and the western elevation has been reduced by 0.7 metres in height. Is that what?
So the height is now 7.5 rather than seven. This is a point raised, there had been some reduction, but seems to be a difference from the figures given, what the reduction actually is.
And so the east elevation, which is the top right-hand corner, they've changed the roof form from a gable end to a hipped roof. And they've reduced the height of that eastern elevation, which is lower than the western elevation, which you can see behind it. They've reduced that by 0.3 metres in height. So it was 7.3 metres originally. And now it's seven metres in height. And then the west elevation, which is from below, is higher than the east elevation. But that's been reduced to from eight metres to 7.3. So that's been reduced overall by 0.7. Is that, sorry, is that what you were clarifying?
Also, yes. Just a point I noted. Also, I would be aware of some rushing.
Councillor Bentet, could you use your microphone?
Sorry, there's just a question how much it's been reduced by compared to what it was originally, which was 20.
It's 0.3 on the eastern elevation and it's 0.7 on the western elevation.
Thank you, Catherine. Councillor Pearce.
Yes, Chair. Page 72, reference to mature trees on the boundary supposed to be removed. Could you give an explanation why those trees are to be removed? Usually mature trees are preserved.
Thank you, Chair. The trees on the western elevation, which are the ones that are marked in red, to be removed to facilitate the access towards the rear property, the new property. Detailed landscaping plan is required by condition. And that we expect it to mitigate any loss of those trees. I think it's condition number it's condition number eight. And it's a very detailed condition for hard and soft landscaping. So there was a necessity to remove those particular trees. But the new landscaping will mitigate their loss with new soft landscaping.
Thank you, thank you, Catherine. I just have a question before councillor Mead, if I may. The neighbour at Lane End was concerned about overlooking. Can you tell me if, in your view, there is going to be any overlooking of that property, please?
Thank you, Chair. If we look at the ground floor plan, the elevation closest to If we look at the ground floor plan, the elevation closest to Lane End, there are some windows on the ground floor, but on the first floor plan, there are no windows on the face of the elevation. There's a small roof light, but that would be obscured glazed. And then looking out at the rear, we've got a couple of dormer windows and a bedroom window, but because of the situation of the property and the fact that Lane End is out of the view angle, that the views from the new dwelling at the rear wouldn't look into the key amenity space of Lane End so it's specific that those windows would not be significantly harmful to neighbour amenity.
Can I, it's been there?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to contribute anymore. So councillor Mead, do you have a question?
Yes, Chair, it's just, I noticed from the section drawing that the land drops away. How, how much does it drop at the point where the new proposed structure is going to be built?
Thank you, Chair. Don't have that exact measurement. What is useful perhaps is the top site section that's got the height above datum level of both the proposed dwelling and Lane End. And it shows, I appreciate it's not terribly clear perhaps, but it shows that at its highest, the proposed dwelling is eighty-five point five metres above datum and Lane End at its highest point is also eighty-five point five metres above datum. Obviously you can see that there is a drop down in level between the two properties, but there wouldn't be any appreciable difference in height, even including that slight drop in levels between the two properties.
Thank you, Chair. Overlook of the drawing looking about half a metre.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Brown.
My question is about the skylight when we do obscure dazing. Can I just confirm that it's for the study, is that correct, looking at your plan?
Yes, that's correct, Chair.
So that would be the only natural lighting to that, or ventilation to that side. So is this skylight going to be capable of obviously of being opened? And if so, at what height would the light still be? Because if it was going to be open for a lot of the year, then the fact that it's obscured lens is going to be very inefficient if it looks into any particular important rooms or the adjacent house.
Thank you, Chair. The roof light would be capable of opening, I assume that I didn't have any specific, anything that said that it wouldn't be open. It's a very small window and it probably, you know, we could ensure that it has a restricted opening perhaps, but I don't think that that, by the use of the room and the size of the window, still don't believe even if it's open, that it would cause any harm in terms of looking towards the neighbouring property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Would you mind giving me the dimensions? Because a very small window can have a dramatic effect. My house is only a few metres from my neighbour and enforcement wouldn't address the opening of that window, so it looks directly into a bedroom and I'd like to ensure that any other resident is in touch with that same inconvenience for many multiple years. So can I, I mean, council house in Twyford specifically how it's ledge built at about a two metre height to prevent overlooking and that with some distance from somebody's house. So can you clarify that to be a formal basis?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have the dimensions of the window and I don't know what the distance, the height from the floor level to the centre of the window, which is where we measure whether or not there's likely to be any harm by overlooking. So I'm afraid I don't have those dimensions to hand.
Would it be possible to condition the window to be top opening so that it's not possible to open it from the bottom view out? It's unlikely it be a skylight that you'd be able to see from the top, so it could be. Would that be a possibility to condition that?
That's going to be up to the strain, isn't it?
Well, it's really, you don't open it, do you?
Yeah, ventilation, you do.
Thank you, Chair. We could amend the condition, which is conditions, yeah, fourteen, to require further details to be submitted of the nature of the opening of the window. So that would be a possibility.
To ensure that the neighbouring property does not suffer any overlooking.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're now in debate, members. Thank you. Debate? Well, I'll start things off, shall I? I'm content that the officers have worked hard with the applicants to ensure that this proposal is not overbearing and is not overlooking. I don't think that the extra traffic generated by one dwelling along the access driveway is going to be impacting the impact on the neighbours. Now, any more than being on a road, really. There's already an existing driveway halfway up the neighbouring house, so I can't see the harm myself. I think so long as all these conditions are met and the new condition on the opening of the upstairs window. I think that we've done everything that we can to ensure that this application is a suitable addition to the housing. Does anybody else want to comment? In debate? No? Okay, thank you very much. This application is recommended for. Can I see, oh, I beg your pardon, councillor Brown.
Sorry, I wasn't sure at what stage I need to ask for an amendment to condition fourteen in order to specify either a certain height or something of.
I think we agreed, councillor Brown, that that would be, that we would ask for details of how that window was going to open so that there is no possibility of overlooking. I think that that was the, if you could leave it to myself and Mrs Pillock.
So does that fall under one of these, just to be?
Yeah, number fourteen, we'll add it to, we'll amend condition fourteen to ensure that there's no overlooking. If you're happy to leave that, the specific wording to Mrs Pillock and myself. Okay, with that in mind, can I see all those in favour of approval for this application? Any things? No? Thank you very much, that's all, members. Thank you. We will now take a five-minute break whilst we just clean the room. Thank you. We're ready to resume our talking. I want to have a look on that. Oh, that's. Let's wait till the public get ready. Okay, hold on. Can we, yeah, come on?
Not moving.
Which is, I was going to say, I think it's happening, the six, the one. Okay, are we ready now, everybody? Councillor Pearce, thank you. Are we ready? Lovely. So thank you very much, everybody. We resume the meeting at item number nine on the agenda, which is forty-eight Hatchmore Road, Denmead. The officer presenting is Marge Ballinger. Good evening, Marge. When you're ready, before you have your presentation.
Good morning. This is a resubmitted application for the partial demolition version of an existing garage, a two-storey site extension. And resubmission is due to a phase two that survey was required last year and unfortunately we were outside the emergence window, so we had to delay the project until that can be obtained. Here is a Google map showing the relationship of the site within the area. Hatchmore Road is off of one of the double roundabouts north with no through access, so through here. And this is a slide with a closer view of the site and the position within the road in the area. The site is adjacent green space and near a stream that runs through the development. So there's a stream that runs behind the site and through a culvert underneath. And the trees shown in the map behind, behind the rear garden are outside the proposal site. And a site of interest for nature conservation, otherwise known as the sink, is located west of the site. That's approximately sixty-five metres away from the proposal site. These are the existing and proposed ground floor plans. The proposal includes demolition of an existing garage that sits back towards the rear garden. The ground floor will be extended to provide further living space off an existing lounge and then a study to be converted for, a study into the garage which will be partially converted. Space for one vehicle meets the standard parking size of a minimum vehicle. It's two point four metres by four point eight metres. The side of the carport will be open for visibility. And the side gap to the boundary will be maintained, so no building further than the existing boundary, with a new fence and gate set back for the rear access into the garden. So originally the rear access was toward, behind the garage and now will be moved forward here. A new wooden bike store is proposed within the rear corner of the property where the garage was removed, so back in the corner here. And these are the existing and proposed first floor plans. The existing bathroom is to become part of the landing and the proposed extension will create space for a third bedroom and a new bathroom here. And this slide shows the existing elevations. The side elevation shows the existing garage in its current position set back into the site here. And this elevation demonstrates the existing bedroom windows have views across the green space area south. And these are the proposed elevations. The two-storey extension is proposed to be set back from the existing front and rear elevation slightly, as shown in the side elevation. And not exceed the original garage width, as shown in the front elevation here. The ridge is also slightly below the existing ridge line. The materials proposed are red brick with its tile to match the existing and other dwellings within the area. And as shown in the side elevation, the carport will be built with pillars so that the side remains open to allow visible light through the new kitchen window here, as well as visibility for movement of the vehicle itself. Part of the garage is to be demolished and the rest converted into a ground floor study. And the new side access is demonstrated in the front elevation with the gate. Space that was once the original garage will now include a wooden bike store toward the rear within the rear. Space that was once the original garage will now include a wooden bike store toward the rear, within the rear garden, and it's to a height of approximately 2.25 metres, so just above the fence line. And as shown on the side elevations, the fence will be adjusted back behind the study and the new side access. There is permitted development rights for fences within this development, just to note. So it wasn't essential for me to have drawings of what the fence would look like. These are views of the existing site and some of the roadside parking at the time of the site visit. And please note that the map here is shown of the proposed site, not the existing. A transport note and parking survey was obtained to demonstrate that there was sufficient off-road parking near the site, and Hampshire Highways raised no objection to the lack of one parking space to the proposed extended property. Photo one shows number 48 dwelling on the right, and some of the roadside parking demonstrated. Photo two is more of number 48 site with the garage and side elevation. And photo three is a view from south, below the green, further south below the green space. And just to note that the tree is within the green space, not the proposed site. And these are the views from the rear garden. Photo four is the rear elevation with the existing gate and fence panels as shown. Photo five is the view back toward the rear boundary and the buffer of trees shown behind the proposal site. Photo six is the existing garage that extends through to the rear boundary. The map shows that there is a gap once the garage to be removed, and that's where the bike stores to be positioned. In conclusion, the proposal does not have a significant or detrimental impact on the character and appearance of the area or residential amenities of the neighbouring properties, and does not have a harmful impact upon highway safety with the proposed parking arrangement, and is therefore in accordance with the policies of the development plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge. Okay, we now move to the public participation. We have Councilor Paula Langford-Smith. Hi, welcome, and you have three minutes to speak from the parish council. There's a timer there to show you how much time you have left. You've switched to microphone, that's excellent, so when you're ready, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for letting me speak today. Anyone that knows the Hatchmore area in Denmead is fully aware of the parking issues that already exist there. Cars have to park on both sides of the road due to the number of cars. However, they have to park on the pavements due to the road being too narrow to allow traffic to pass. You will unsure appreciate the problems that inconsiderate parking causes to both the emergency services when accessing, and also it's especially bad in Hatchmore at weekends and evenings. There is also, of course, the issue of access for the disabled and buggy users. In addition to parking on the pavements, work fans frequently park on the grass surges at the entrance to the estate on the roundabout that was shown in that picture earlier, because there is simply nowhere else for them to park. I appreciate that the applicant has provided a transport and parking assessment in support of their application. However, one can hardly expect an applicant to provide a report which hides the problems in the area. The photographs provided by the parish council were taken at various times and presented a more realistic presentation of the situation. And in those photographs, what looked like spaces are in fact driveway entrances, there are no parking spaces. Whilst this application seeks to only reduce the parking provision at the property by one space, it will set a precedent which is undesirable. This application for a three-bedroom property is contrary to Winchester's parking standards policy. Policy one, which requires a minimum provision of two parking spaces for a two- or three-bedroom property, not a desired provision, is a minimum provision. And we feel that these standards should be enhanced, not ignored. Given the significant parking problems which already exist in Hatchmore, and the fact that this application is contrary to Winchester's published policy, we respectfully request that you refuse this application. Thank you.
Very much. Members, do we have any questions or clarification for Councilor Langford-Smith? No? Okay, thank you very much. And now we turn to the supporter, Sarah Roberts. I think you're the agent for the applicant, is that right?
Yes, thank you, that's correct.
Lovely, you have three minutes, there's the timer, when you're ready, thank you.
Perfect, thank you for your time today. Yes, as we discussed, I'm the agent acting on behalf of the applicant in this application. There are no objections regarding the actual design of the proposed extension, and the application has case officer's support. As you recently heard, Denmead Parish Council has raised an objection regarding the loss of one parking space. This is contrary to the Highways' consultation, who have undertaken two-site visits and have no objection. Highways have stated they are satisfied that the removal of a single parking space will not have a detrimental impact on the local street. Highways also continue to state it would be noted that the Highways Authority recommendation does not set a precedent, and any future application of this nature will be assessed on its own merits. Denmead Parish Council have commented stating that they have previously received complaints about parking on pavements causing parents with buggies and those using mobility scooters having to go into the road to pass cars and vans parked on pavements. We would like it noted, however, these complaints are not regarding the applicant, and therefore this is not considered to be relevant to this application. The applicant is hoping to build this extension so they continue to live in their home rather than moving. The applicant only has one car, works from home, and cycles locally rather than using a vehicle. Please also refer to the statement within the committee report which states that the use of the garage by the applicant is for storage only, and the drive is used for parking of one vehicle. Given the pedestrian through access within the development, Denmead village can be reached by foot within approximately 13 minutes, or by bicycle in approximately three minutes. There is also a bus stop approximately four minutes walk to Southwick Road. Due to the site's relationship to public communities and the availability of off-road parking, the lack of one additional parking space is not considered to have an adverse impact, impact sufficient to warrant the refusal of this application. A condition would also be added to ensure that the carport within the extension be used for vehicle parking only. So to conclude, as there is no Highways objection, we would like to conclude that the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you both for keeping the room nicely. Members, do we have any questions or clarification for Mrs. Roberts? No? Okay, thank you very much indeed. We now move to, back to our officer. Marge, do you have anything to add since your presentation? No, thank you. Okay, I'm happy to take questions on the whole report for Mrs. Ballinger, if you would. Any questions, members? Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. As members are aware, this is actually my patch, and I'm fairly familiar with the situation in Hatchmore. It has always been somewhat chaotic. Of course, all the progress that we've got shown us today, both by the parish council and otherwise, have come from the daytime, when the vast amount of cars are no longer in city. In the evening, as I drove down the other day, this is actually on a double bend, it creates problems. The majority of the cars are parked illegally, because they're actually on footway. But my question is really to the officer. During your presentation, you said one vehicle meets the requirements. Well, our policy is different, so I'm not terribly sure how this can meet the requirements when it doesn't actually meet our policy.
I think there was a misindustriating, I was trying to demonstrate the size of the vehicle parking, but it's sufficient for one vehicle, 2.4 metres by 4.8.
Does it meet our policy?
Not that particular part of the policy, but the... Just want to refer to page 97 that explains why we think sometimes that it's a merit policy.
I was just gonna point out, Chair, I think the case officers explained the reasons why whilst the policy has a requirement, it does allow for a further assessment, and that's what's been undertaken in this case, and that the case office explains that assessment, and of course, Hatcher County Council's Highway Authority haven't raised an objection on highway safety grounds.
Thank you, Mrs. Pilick. Okay, any more questions? Debate? Councilor Reed?
As I started to go to debate, did you have a question or something, or turned it around? Yes, Chair, comments were made about the bus services, one every two hours. Yes, there is a stop not too far away. However, as I say, it's one every two hours. The survey that was carried out in paragraph two of the Highways, I presume was carried out by the developer, as it has been an independent, probably independent, it was carried out in the favour of... But the problem is, Chair, as I've already stated, Hatchmore has got narrow roads, it just about meets the requirement, however, meets it without the idea of parking on the highway. Now, the Road Traffic Act is quite clear. No vehicle has a right to park on a highway. That's why at any point in time, the police can come along and book you for it. You have a right to pass and repass according to the Road Traffic Act. These are not only part of the highway, but they're also part of the footway, which does make it somewhat difficult for people who are in the town to get around. And on a double bend, I think is, well, it's quite dangerous in the evening, because the land is not flat, it has a rise in it. I believe this particular property relies on a parcel of land adjacent to it, because this is, in my view, a boundary-to-bound extension. It basically covers the whole width of the property with a complete structure. At the moment, you've got a driveway which is open. I believe this is only development of this particular site. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Reed. Any others? And Councilor Levington, Councilor Piers.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at this and bearing in mind other applications we've had over a period of time, our planning policy on the number of cars per bedroom should be maintained, and we've maintained it all the way through, and we've been completely consistent. And I cannot see a reason to change all this to practice, I fear.
I see, there's you.
Yeah, it's the, take it, yeah. It is contrary that this, the parking issue, we've got an emerging level plan. The question is, it's not in our present policy, is this number of vehicles that are parking here going to be on the future policy? In comparison to what other emerging policies regarding climate emergency and so on. And this certainly leaves all in a quandary. Is this argument about, like a parking on a site, it really goes back to, I think, I seem to remember it was John Tesco's, when he was in what we used to call the deep log at that time, did number of vehicles and private plants, that's an example, where emerging vehicles couldn't get through. I also understand there is an emerging traffic bill which is going to forbid parking on pavements and so on. So if this is correct, and this does emerge, where then does this leave the situation where people are parking on pavements? Because they don't have enough room, because of our climate policies, to put their cars on site. It is a valid argument for us to say, well, in the light of climate change, we should be catching a bus. Unfortunately, the buses in villages like Denmead, as close it is to west of Watelooval and Watelooval itself, doesn't have the same sort of bus service that we are fortunate to have in the Winchester urban area, which then puts it into a quandary. Because little alternative, and I'm sure the agent could point out, because we are providing a cycle store, so people can, or we could say to people, that MP called Teddick said to people a long time when he was talking about employment, he said, well, get on your bike, and pedal up to Watelooval where there are the superstores, and get everything onto your special bike to carry your cargo and bring it all home. I think we'd be a long way short of people going to want to do that, certainly my generation. But then, of course, it is the world of younger generations, not my generation, as we're frequently told in the council. So you can think back to the question, is, is this issue, which I think Councilor Reed is making, and Parish Council has made about parking, a valid reason to completely say, write this against the whole of this design? The design of this house, I think, is fine. Could be argued as all the developments, it does take what used to be the drive, provided in, I don't know what the age of that house is, but I would say it probably was designed and built during Tesco Theatre, to get cars off the road, now we're saying, oh, that's not wrong. It's a dog parker's fault, she's on a footpath stick, and I think we all are, but I... I agree with everything that Councilor Reed has said, and everything that Parish Council says, but is that a mill, override the rest of this building? And I regret to say on balance, I don't think it is.
Thank you, Councilor Piers. Any other contributions to debate? I think I'd like to say that with no Highways objection, we cannot object on the basis of the fact that there is only one parking space, because that would just be completely overturned, out of view. So from my point of view, okay, I'm unhappy with us not sticking with our normal policy of having two parking spaces, but if Highways are telling us that is acceptable in this particular instance, we have to accept that. I'm also pleased to see the new cycle store, and I don't agree with Councilor Reed that it's an edge-to-edge extension, there is a clear walkway along the side of the house to the back garden and the cycle store. So, yeah, one meter, nevertheless, the principle is there. So I think that, and I agree with Councilor Piers, and it's otherwise a very attractive extension to the house, and makes a family home out of a very small, semi-detached home. So I certainly will be supporting the officer's recommendation. Is that all for debates, members? Yes? Okay. So this application is recommended for approval. Can I see all those in favour, please? Are those against?
Sorry, that was six, Chair. One against, two against.
And abstentions, please?
One.
Thank you very much. So that application is approved. Thank you very much. Members' lunch is in the mayor's parlour today, you'll be pleased to hear. And I'm glad that you tell us what time we can expect it to be there.
It should be available at the time of now.
And we will return that to 2pm. Thank you very much, everybody.